A motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting, June 3rd, 2013.
Yes.
Now you make the changes.
There's just a small error because it references, it correctly notes that I asked Vice Chancellor Weintraub about the structure of the escalators, but that was actually a question about John Jay rather than the Memorial Sloan Kettering Hunter Building. But if it could be noted that it was a question about the John Jay new building, North Building, whatever it would be, then that would be, I would appreciate that.
I'm gonna call it the North Building. It's the new building.
Okay, the new, let's just call it the new building, whatever it is.
Okay.
So noted. All right, with that amendment, motion to approve?
Approve.
Okay. We have several policy items. We'll get a briefing from the Vice Chancellor. They concern Hunter College, construction funding for design and construction management of the renovation of the sixth and seventh floor of Wexler Library. They concern City College, construction funding for renovation of the Alumni House for the Colin Powell Center. And at Hunter College, amended resolution authorizing two contracts for the renovation and equipment bid out of the Broadcast Media Center at 695 Park Avenue. And the capital budget request, so.
You want to do the policy items first?
Yeah.
Okay. So the first policy item regards Hunter College and the Wexler Library. I think as this committee remembers, we came to you about a year and a half ago for a project on the third floor of the Hunter Building for the library. There was no money in the capital budget to redo the library at Hunter College. And President Rab, in consultation with my staff and I, decided that she was gonna raise money from her foundation to be able to redo the library. She didn't want to wait to have to, I guess, muddle through a five or 10-year capital plan. So we completed the third floor, and now we are in the process of working on the sixth and seventh floor of the library. As a result of this renovation, the library will have smart classrooms, a new education library, there'll be a center for the McCauley Honors College, and there'll be open study areas. That which is sort of reflective of the way our students like to study now, here and on other campuses as well. And on the seventh floor, there'll be learning centers for math and science and writing and a pre-professional center. Because there is no money in the capital budget to be able to cover these costs, the foundation needs to deposit that money with CUCF so that we can proceed and both let the contracts and be able to do the construction. So this resolution would authorize the acceptance of the money so then we can spend it and do the library project. I just want to note that we have hired an architect off of our requirements contract who is already working on the project, and we feel pretty confident that if all the money's in place within the next year, we can be in construction on this project.
And who is that architect?
Oh, you know, I knew you were gonna ask me that. Bob, do you remember the name of the architect?
Marble Fairbrings.
Marble Fairbrings, right. Marble Fairbrings, who by the way, did the library project at Columbia University. So they are a reputable firm and knowledgeable. They also did the new library in Little Neck, Queens, which we visited as well. So they are, I guess they're niches that they do libraries.
I think it's great that the J. Weiser, I think it's Baruch, I think it's great that we're getting the money raised out of Hunter, because obviously the capital budget is a slow thing. Could you just explain to us how much money is going to be needed, both to do the project as a whole, and then when you start, and also the relationship here between the Hunter College Foundation and the City University Construction Fund?
Sure.
And how that works in terms of the management of it?
The total project cost for both floors is $15 million. And the way that it works is that the Hunter Foundation transfers the money to CUCF. CUCF then lets the contracts and oversees the construction of the project.
Okay, so in fact, the construction fund, the foundation is controlled at the college level. However, that works at the various colleges, and then they deposit the money.
Yes.
There's an agreement that the money will be used for X purpose, and then, okay.
Exactly. And as I said, we already did this for the third floor at the library, so it's, we're not paving new territory here. We've done this before.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the second item has to do with City College. And I guess this is a similar structure to the Hunter project. I think the committee will also remember that we had discussed almost over a year ago, the fact that we were contemplating building a Colin Powell Center at City College, and we were exploring various sites and various sizes. And the foundation at City College had hired NEAD Partners as the architect to sort of scope out and figure out where we could put a Colin Powell Center on the campus. We identified some property. We identified a project. As one can imagine, building a brand-new, very large building on the City College campus, we estimated that the project would run about $50 million. That's 5-0. We worked very closely with the college and with Colin Powell. He began to fundraise for this project. We also had discussions with the state, who, as we discussed the capital budget, will talk about the fact that the capital budget still continues to be tight, and, you know, there isn't a lot of money that's sort of discretionary, that isn't already attached to projects. And Colin Powell, in consultation with the college, decided that we would scale back the project a bit. The college already owned a property adjacent to the campus called Alumni House. We purchased it a number of years ago. It's a brick structure at 280 Convent Avenue, and it's listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And if you were to drive there now, the building is in total disrepair from disuse, and it's been occupied for well over 20 years. We all believe that the renovation and the expansion of this building will really lend itself to creating this Colin Powell Center at City College. We believe that we can do the renovation for about $6.5 million. And similar to the Hunter proposal, the foundation at City College will transfer the money to CUCF so that we can bid out the contracts and do the work on this project.
You know what's the cross street for 280 Convent?
You're asking.
Okay, no, only if you know. I'm just trying to visualize. I know the campus, but I don't know where that is.
It's right, this building is right outside where the gates are. So right outside where that beautiful.
141?
141.
Yes, 141.
Somewhere between 139 and 141, isn't it true?
Yeah, yeah.
Would there, and I, it sounds like then, assuming future funding opens up, that you would then try to add on additional office or conference space, or is this just?
You can add on to this building. Because it's on the National Historic Site, the exterior of the building cannot be added on. As a matter of fact, we had to go not only to, we had to go to Shippo in order to get, you needed a second form of egress stairs at the back of the building. We needed to get state approval to be able to do that. So we won't be able to add on to the building in any way, shape, or form, but in consultation with City College, with Colin Powell, and with the folks who are currently running the Colin Powell Center, which already exists and is at City College, we believe that this will be more than adequate space for the students to have seminars and to have events at the site.
And very attractive space.
Yes.
That memorializes city's history in a very appealing way.
So the programming needs of the center do coincide with the existing space, and NEAD will be redoing it during this time?
Yes, they are gonna be redoing the space.
So they did program analysis with Colin Powell?
It's gonna be a total gut renovation. Everything has to come out of that building. Okay?
Okay.
The third item is an item that has come to this committee before and went to the CUNY Board before in February of 13. It has to do with two contracts for the renovation of the equipment of the Broadcast Media Center at Hunter College. This is a project that we will be using city money for, city REZO-A money for. When we went out to bid, when we originally went to the committee, we thought the total project cost would be about 1 point, let's see if I can get the right amount. We thought it would be $1.1 million. When we went out to bid, the bids came in higher. It's about 1.278. So we're coming back to the committee for approval to be able to engage in these contracts and both do the construction and buy the equipment. So those are the three items for action.
And so why, can we have a motion to approve these three, and then we'll move on to capital budget?
So moved.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approved.
So before you is a much smaller version of what I'm gonna go through on the capital budget, but on the screens will be the version that I'm gonna go through. I just thought it'd be useful for you to be able to carry away with you, a smaller version. I didn't think we needed to kill any more trees and give you a 25-page presentation. So I want to present the capital budget to the committee, and this will go to the full board at the end of November. So I thought we would do a recap of what happened last year in the capital budget, both on the city and the state side. So on the state side, CUNY was awarded a $55 million challenge grant for CUNY 2020, which is a program that we are very much in the throes of and hope to have some announcements by the end of December. We received $8 million for critical maintenance for our community colleges, and as this committee knows, that money is matched against city money. So this 8 million is toward money that was already given to us in the city budget, and therefore we could match it. $37 million for administrative costs for our capital program. That goes to fund my operation. And another $3.1 billion was re-appropriated in existing funding. In addition, we received $23 million for Superstorm Sandy Recovery, funds that we needed to be able to bring back certain campuses, like BMCC and Hunter at the Brookdale Campus, back to where they were before the storm. In the city budget in 2014, I just want to say that the Borough Presidents and the City Council were very generous to CUNY in 2014. We got a total of almost $56 million in REZO-A money from both the City Council and the Borough Presidents. And I think this committee knows that we have had a discussion with the city over the last few years, that we were short $71 million that was owed to us in terms of matching money, and we agreed on a payment schedule, and the city agreed to give us another installment of that, which is $10 million. The capital projects that we work on at CUNY, they require long-range planning and funding. They are usually funded over numerous years. And we currently have in progress over $3.6 billion in projects across our 24 campuses. And that includes both city and state money, large projects, small projects, and a number over 400 critical maintenance projects that are going on. And over the last five years, we've spent an average of $500 million. That's capital funds that have gone out the door. And as I mentioned before, unfortunately, the state still continues to be concerned, rightfully so, about reaching their bonding cap. And so therefore, the state money continues to be very tight on the capital side. So every year, CUNY completes a five-year request, and the process requires that we put in hundreds of projects. Some are phased, some are partially funded. And we believe that this process creates a consistent message for the university. And the process itself takes over six months. We start right after the budget is approved in April. We start to develop the next year. We meet with the campuses. We meet with the VPs for finance. My staff, headed by Bob Lemieux and Megan Moore-Wilk and Gwen Pearlman, they go out and visit all 24 campuses and really start to discuss both the hopes and aspirations of the individual campuses, as well as what we believe the priorities should be on those campuses as well. And at the end of that process, as you all know, we come here in November, and then it goes to the full board. So in summary, what are we asking for? We're asking for $6.7 billion, 5.3 billion for our senior colleges, and 1.4 billion for our community colleges. And included in this request is also approximately $100 million that we're gonna be asking in 2015, and REZO-A money from the city as well. And as we all know, the city allocates its funds on an annual basis. So where we are last year versus this year, last year our request was 6.4 billion, this year it's 6.7 billion, because in the request is the $55 million that we are requesting for the next four years of CUNY 2020. The state only appropriated enough cash for CUNY 2024. This year, we need to request each year for an addition on CUNY 2020. Just briefly on our priorities, we continue to focus on state-of-the-art repair on our campuses, and will continue to ask for critical maintenance money. And as I noted before, we are well into spending a good portion of the $1.4 billion that we got in the last five-year plan. And as I noted, we have over 400 active projects going on in our campuses. Another priority is to complete partially-funded projects that are ongoing. So projects like the Field Building at Baruch College, where we're just beginning Phase One of what will probably be a $150 million renovation of the building. This first phase will be about $60 million, as well as we are asking for money for York College for its new academic village. And then we will continue to request funds for what has been known as the Chancellor's Initiatives. Decade of the Sciences, requests for a new science building at Brooklyn College, new science building at Hunter College, and also upgrades for technology across the university, which includes CUNY First, as well as funds to purchase science and educational technology equipment. I just wanna, I always like to show some pretty pictures of some of the projects that we hope to get done. What you see before you is the final schematic of the new York Academic Village Conference Center. We hope to build 165,000-square-foot building out at York, and it's gonna house the new home for business at York, as well as classrooms and computer labs. And we're requesting $239 million. But like all large projects such as this, what we'd like to do is start to get the money into the capital budget over the next few years. And NEAD and Associates was the architect of this building. And I just want to say that President Keyes and her staff and the entire community had a tremendous amount of input regarding this building. Another capital request is the new science building that I mentioned at Brooklyn College. This would replace Roosevelt Hall, which was their old gym. You know, we built a new gym for them at West Quad, and this would be about 180,000-square-foot new science building. Mitchell Jurgula is the architect for this building. And the great thing about this building is that it will have an abundance of general-purpose classrooms, as well as support space and high-tech instructional labs. But there won't be any research labs in this building. And we're requesting $290 million for this building. We already have some money allocated for this building, which was part of the last five-year capital plan, but it's not sufficient to even to begin to start construction of this building.
This would be a game changer for Brooklyn College, and particularly its emphasis on undergraduate research and science, instruction in the science and technology disciplines.
The footprint is a 280,000-square-foot footprint, but we'd only be requesting to build the first 180,000, and working with the college to determine what would go in the other 100,000, whether they would need additional science, or whether they would want to build some other building or just leave it vacant for now. Another new facility that we're requesting is for the College of Staten Island. It's the Interdisciplinary High Performance Computational Center. I think we have to come up with another name for this, because it's really a mouthful to get this out.
Doesn't trip lightly off the tongue.
No, does it, right? The architects are HDR, and they specialize in buildings such as this. We're proposing to build 175,000-square-foot facility, which would be dedicated to state-of-the-art scientific computing, labs, visualization, instructional and research labs, classrooms, and dedicated student work areas. And for this project, we're requesting $208 million. The next project, which I know this committee has seen before, and I don't have to go into great detail on, is it's a new building for Hunter College, and it's a public-private partnership with Sloan-Kettering. And this would be a 330,000-square-foot building just for Hunter to house the Brookdale Campus, as well as research science facilities on the top six floors. And this is being done in partnership with NEAD Architects and Perkins Eastman. And we are requesting $520 million for this project. We're also proposing that we build this project in phases. So we would build basically the core and the shell initially, and then we would, over the next five-year plan, come back in and ask for the additional money, just to build out the Brookdale piece, and then over time, start to build out the research science space of this building. Just some recently completed projects, which I know this committee always likes to hear about. This past August, we opened up the new dorm at the College of Staten Island, which was also a public-private partnership. And this is a 454-bed, two-building facility, and I'm proud to say that on day one, it was 100% leased up.
Fully leased up, and great excitement at the college. It's a wonderful dedication.
And just to give the committee a sense, the beds run from $1,100 to $1,600 a month, depending if you want to be in a quad or you want to be in a single. But all the beds are leased up, and I'm told that it's quite a successful dorm out there. The next project is a project that I'm very excited about. It's the recently completed childcare center at Lehman. And one of the reasons that I'm very excited about this project, the fact that there are 140 children that are able to use the center, is that this is a prefabricated modular building. And the cost, as you can well imagine, is far less than building a building from the ground up. This project cost us $7 million, and the building was able to be put in in record time. And it was delivered in time for the academic year and opened in September. And, you know, sometimes you look at these prefab buildings, and they look pretty ugly, but this one looks pretty good. We had a good architect working with us. And I think that this is the way for us to go in terms of looking at new building construction at CUNY. In light of the fact that Forest City Rattner is building a 32-story, prefabricated modular apartment building by the Barclay Center, I believe that this is gonna be the next wave. And there's a whole factory at the Brooklyn Navy Yard producing these modular units. So you will hear more from me about, I believe that this is where.
Who is the architect for this, since this is a new one for us?
I don't have the name here.
Harrison Associates.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that the old Wallace K. Harrison for?
Garrison.
Well, Garrison, I'm sorry.
Oh, you said Garrison.
If we proceed with the prefab thing, as Iris has pointed out, it also has economic development interests for the city and the state, so it becomes a twofer in that sense.
And following up on what Chancellor Kelly said, these modular units were produced in Pennsylvania. But I believe that there is a whole new industry available, both in the city and in the state, for these modular units that I know Bill and I want to talk to the Empire State Development Corporation about. So this is something pretty exciting. Another project that's under construction, and hopefully we'll start to see the building come above ground, is the New Performing Arts Center at Brooklyn College. This is now called the Brooklyn College Tao Performing Arts Center. Pfeiffer Partners was the architect. And this project costs us about $90 million, of which the Tao family gave a rather substantial gift to the university. This building will house the new theater performance space, as well as rehearsal and practice space. And we anticipate completion in November of next year. We broke ground last week at New York City Tech for the long-awaited new academic complex. This is gonna be a 350,000-square-foot building at the corner of J. and Tillery Street, and I believe will really be a game changer, not only for the college, but for the university as well. For those of us who live in Brooklyn, we know that it lies between the two bridges, and at some point, everybody passes this corner. And Perkins Eastman was the architect. We said we wanted a wow building, and I think they gave us a wow building. Construction really began in January. We demolished the building over the summer, and it'll take about three and a half years for the building to be completed. So we, this space completion will be sometime in March of 2017. And it's gonna house classrooms and computer labs. It's gonna have a thousand-seat auditorium, as well as a gym. And I just want to thank Russ Hotzler for being so patient in terms of getting this project started.
Just, what we should say about?
Sorry, please, Phil, go ahead, I'm sorry.
What I was gonna say is that when we did the, you know, just the groundbreaking there, this is really going to add, you know, we ought to think of our, all of the projects that we have as really adding to the infrastructure of the boroughs that we're in. And this especially is going to be a really nice linchpin when we consider what's going to happen in that whole corridor over there, all of the development that is taking place already, and how this really adds to changing the skyline there. So it's no small feat, and in fact, there's a lot of anticipation that people have. It's revitalizing people and giving people a good feeling about Brooklyn again as it's continuing to grow. So it's a great project, and it's really great that we are adding our name to that list of helping to revitalize that area.
I was gonna say the same thing, only you said it better. Virtually every political figure at Brooklyn was at the event and all made the point that Trustee Barry just made. Very exciting.
And Bill Kelly did not get pneumonia, even though I told him he would, because he took his overcoat off.
With the chair's permission, I'd like to use this as a segue into one of my favorite topics, which I think we've talked about before, but I think the board vice chair brought it up, and the interim chancellor brought it up again. And that is the significant economic impact that the CUNY projects are having. Now, there are processes for measuring economic impact. There are firms that do just that. Most developers in the city, when they want tax breaks, hire independent firms to look at economic impact. You mentioned the new creation of jobs in the Brooklyn Navy Yard for modular housing. That's just a simple example. Equally important, which is what you came up with, Phil, is the notion of the impact that CUNY Development, like at J. Street and others, have on creating values in that neighborhood. Upscale, growing, retail, and the dollars translate, it's quantifiable, and they translate to new tax revenues. We may not pay tax, but people around them. The High Line is the best example. The people who built the High Line spent five years trying to convince CSX and all of those owners along the avenue that a park would increase the value of their property, and they were laughed at for years. I'm suggesting, and I think I've said this before, that CUNY undertake, have financed some form of economic impact analysis of our projects over some period of time. Maybe you pick a borough, maybe you take the new projects. And I suggest it one, not only for purposes of marketing CUNY's impact, and I think last year we talked about 20% of all of the construction revenues in the city coming from Five Boroughs coming from CUNY.
That's correct.
And I suggest to the secretary and others that it will be a very powerful argument, if in fact, the politics and the economies change over time, that we can go armed to the city. the city and the state saying, "We are building this, but this is what it means to the city other than just an iconic building." And of course, iconic buildings and real estate parlance increase values. You can charge more money, and you can get it. So I, again, I lay that on the table as something for this committee to consider, and it could be formalized fairly simply and straightforward fashion.
The timeliness of that idea is important, because now we have a number of new players that are coming into office. And they don't understand-
Necessarily.
-the total ramifications of what we do and how we do it. And so I think, you know, as we, every time, you know, I think we've done a good job in lobbying the city and the state to increase funding for a lot of our projects. But I think that all of us ought to be armed with those factoids that help us to understand, because all of us have a job to do in terms of making sure that all of the new officials are educated, all of the players in the new administration are educated. I really, I just want to second what you're saying, and I think, I'd like to see us bring that to some type of a resolution. I'd like to ask the chancellor to just, to look at the feasibility of that, and then just maybe come back and tell us what you think might be possible.
Duly noted, and that will happen. I agree with Charlie's view of the economic impact. In this case, it has the advantage of being true. One out of five building projects in the Five Boroughs, CUNY-related. It's impressive to say that. More impressive, I think, to be able to put a number on it, and we'll take a look at that.
Part of the countercyclical aspect of building when nobody else is building, and that means you can get better prices on your construction. One other thing related to that is when Charles is talking about street life, to the extent, obviously dealing with your various constraints, including tight envelopes, in neighborhoods like that, that retail or other things can get put in that add to street life. For example, City Tech is in a very under-retail neighborhood. I'm, you know, so to the extent that we can do that, I think that adds the positive impact, to the extent it fits in with all of the other constraints, because we need the academic needs taken care of first.
The other issue with retail space is that you're limited, because you're using DASNY financing, you're limited as to how much private retail space you're allowed to put in.
There may be some structures, legal structures, you know, whether condos or whatever. I'm not saying, there may be some ways of addressing that.
Well, the real point, and I don't want to belabor this, but I don't think it's the purview of this committee to form some sort of motion that asks facilities to look at developing a formal approach for economic impact and then costing that out. As I said, there are firms that do this. And what Jay is referring to is something in economic impact called the halo effect. The building and what it does is one thing, but what happens in the surrounding area is another, and it's measurable. This is not high in the sky, although I think you did mention something that has the advantage of being true. Some economic impact studies promise X number of jobs, and the state has been victimized by that. The General Motors Plant in Westchester is an example.
Barclay Center.
Well, actually Barclay Center is having, anyway, we won't get into it. But I'm just wondering what the process might be on this.
Well, I know that the chancellor said that he would follow up on this and-
The chancellor has so many things on his plate.
Process is relatively simple. We'll cost this out, and we'll get back to the committee and try to proceed with it. I think it has virtue.
So the next major project, which is in construction, and if you look to your right on the screen, it's exactly what the buildings look like today, is the ASRC complex up at City College. KPF and FAD were the architects in joint venture for this project. I can only say that these two buildings are beyond spectacular. And this will be a 400,000 square foot advanced science research complex up at City College. One building will be the CCNY building, and the building to the left will be the ASRC complex. The total project cost is about $744 million. And construction started in March of 2006, and we believe that we'll get a CFO in March of 2014. And these buildings, I think, will be a game changer. And Charlie, just what you were talking about, or part of what you were talking about, when you go to this job site today and you go there when it's quitting time, you see 550 construction workers walking off the site.
Yep.
So that gives you a sense of, and at lunchtime, they are going into that neighborhood and eating in the restaurants and using the various-
Well, there you go with the halo effect.
Yep.
They work there, you've created jobs, and then they go in the neighborhood and they spend money.
I was there on Saturday at a restaurant that I often go to, and it had just been totally renovated. And I asked the woman who owns it, knowing the answer, why this had happened, and she said, "Because they had so much more street trade at lunchtime that they were able to do something she'd wanted to do for a decade."
And that's one of the things to be careful about, too, by the way, and I don't want to go on here, I guess. But creation of construction jobs is one thing. But when this is completed and this building is occupied, there are going to be additional jobs, and there are going to be related jobs that'll be permanent. And those get measured as well. I mean, it's a fantastic thing we're doing, and I'm just tooting our horn. I'm the only one here, but what the hell. You don't mind, do you?
I'm glad you're doing it.
I was going to ask you where they park it.
Oh, there we are. They take public transportation, especially at CCNY.
I had mentioned earlier about at Baruch College, the field building. This project will take us a number of phases to renovate the structure. We've hired David Brody Bond as the architects.
Davis.
Davis Brody Bond. And they have done just, I think, an excellent job in terms of revisualizing what this iconic building will look like. As I mentioned, phase one is about $60 million, and this 1928 building needs its insides renovated, as well as the outside of the building renovated. And the work has begun, and we hope phase one will be completed by 2016. The last project is one that I know President Mello is very excited about. It's our LaGuardia Community College Center III building. It's one of the largest buildings that CUNY currently owns. It was the home of the former Nabisco Biscuit Company in Long Island City. The building is 99 years old, and we will be renovating the facade of the building. It's going to be about a $118 million project. This project is being spearheaded by Mitchell Jurgula, a firm that's done a lot of work for CUNY, and I think has done a very good job in terms of creating a modern structure for LaGuardia Community College. And we anticipate that this facade will be done by 2016, June of 2016. Let me just say, this was a very complicated project, because it does not, the building does not sit within a campus. We had to go to the, what was formerly known as the Art Commission to get their approval, not only for the look of the building, but the signage and the color and everything. But we have finally gotten those approvals, and this project hopefully will be moving along very soon. So, Mr. Chairman, that's my report on the capital budget.
Anybody have any more general questions on the budget?
Yeah, just a few things. First, on the Brookdale campus and Hurricane Sandy renovation, just what's the balance there between doing the post-Sandy renovation, given the plan moving a few years, because you don't necessarily want to reconstruct the whole thing? So what's your thought process as to how that's working?
We had to get the physical therapy program back up and operating. They were totally wiped out in Sandy. The morgue was wiped out. It became a toxic site. So we've done the minimal amount of work. We had to get all the systems back and operating, because they were wiped out with the saltwater that came in. So, you know, we did what we needed to do to get the school back in and working. And, you know, it will be a couple of years before the Brookdale site moves to their temporary space at this LaGuardia Center III. So you needed to do some work to keep them going.
Okay. And just, could you walk us through your process? Because obviously, you're dealing in a very complex environment here, where you're rarely getting all of your funding upfront for a project. So you, you know, so when, could you just give us your thought process as to when you begin construction and how you manage these things so that you are not left in the lurch with shells, which, by the way, obviously, I have yet to hear you be left in the lurch with a shell, but just, if we'd like to learn that.
On the very large projects, we work very closely with the state, in particular, state DOB. And there's something called an 1184 process, where you basically have to go and get a letter which says you can proceed with the project. Typically, DOB will not let you proceed unless pretty much all your money is there, or you know where the money is going to come from, whether you're going to reappropriate funds or, you know, whether you know that you have all the money in place. And typically, DOB will give you the nod to go ahead and start a design process and create a schematic. And at that point, you have to pause to see whether the money is forthcoming or you have it in place, and then you proceed from there. So an example, in the Hunter project, we received an 1184 just to proceed with the schematic designs, and that's where we are right now. And you clearly can't go into the ground unless you have all the money in place, just for what you said. They don't want, they don't want to see half a building go up, and then you stop, because then it's going to cost you a lot more to do the project if you have half a building up.
And how's that going to relate to the bond and the debt and its limits, either to getting, to getting permission to build? Because it sounds like that's adding another layer of complexity onto your process in that if we're, if the state is constantly bumping up against its limit every year, that would seem to make it quite difficult, then, to assure money.
What's in construction now is built into the state plan, and that includes both the critical maintenance projects, as well as the larger projects. What we're suggesting on other projects, to be able to move them forward, is that we shift around money or we reappropriate money to be able to get going. Again, that's within the plan that DOB and the governor's office has already seen and approved. So that's pretty much the process, and we feel pretty confident that, over the next couple of years, there's enough ability for CUNY to be able to move forward on the projects that we've already set into the ground and are already in construction.
I have two questions, the easy one, so he follows on Jay. Given the size and complexity of this pretty amazing budget, do you have, or do you perform an actual versus budget cost analysis for each of the projects, so you know how much you're over, under, or on target, both on an individual project and cumulatively? And does that come before this committee in terms of results or in front of finance?
The answer is yes, we do. And I don't believe that this committee would see that type of analysis, or at least hasn't seen it in the past. We stay within our budget, and we have never come back to the committee, at least while I've been the vice chancellor, we've never had to come back to the committee and said, "Oh, whoops, we've run out of money. We don't have money."
So you've never been over budget on any projects?
Not while I've been the vice chancellor.
That's fabulous.
Although prices are going up, as you know, Charlie.
Yeah, well, that's one of the reasons why I've raised it, for two reasons. Fear of oversight, of CUNY spending billions of dollars, and they're saying, "Well, that you wasted this." That's the out fear, but the, also the cost of construction, which is-
Let me just give you an example. On New York City Tech, in the Brooklyn project, we have an engineer's estimate, and then we're out on the street bidding.
Yep.
And we're very mindful, and we keep an eye on what the engineer's estimate versus what the prices that we've gotten back. You know, at the end of the day, if you end up in the negative column, you have to go back and you have to do some value engineering. Right now, I don't think we're at that point. I think we'll be okay. But again, prices are beginning to creep up. We've been lucky over the last few years, because we were the only game in town for a while. So we'll have to-
So if you take the CCNY project, for example, is the project management and the project controls overseen by your staff, or is there an independent construction manager, contract project manager?
CCNY is overseeing the ACR, AC, the project at City College is overseen by DASNY. The one in Brooklyn is one of those projects where CUNY is overseeing the management of the project. So if you remember from this committee, we started over that responsibility from DASNY.
But internally?
Yes.
And are you, are all these projects subject to the Wicks Law? So are you acting as your own general contractor?
All projects are subject to Wicks, yes.
That's amazing you're staying under budget. Okay.
Makes it, that should be-
Take that into account at the time we budget.
Yeah.
I was going to say, that should be a story unto itself.
You know, and also, you know, these are public projects, and any public project that doesn't have a healthy contingency, I think, is asking for trouble, so.
What range of contingencies do you typically-
Anywhere from 10 to 20 percent.
Actually, for a public project, considering that many public projects run 30 percent over, that's, you know, that's good management.
My second question goes to something you talked about earlier, and that is that it's in the document that all the presidents sign off on the projects they're doing. And I think you were very clear about your staff's going around to all the campuses. So there's an initial input from all of the presidents about what their projects and priorities are. And then I think I understood you to say that your staff reviews that, synthesizes it, and comes up with the set of priorities. Do the presidents stay involved in final say of priorities?
Sure. I mean, we would never either impose our values on a campus. And likewise, I think that the presidents have learned to-
That's the, that's the way I'm looking at it from their side.
Well, I think also, I think also the presidents have learned, and I don't know, Gail is sitting here, that, you know, we're pretty honest with them in terms of creating expectations of what we feel we can get done and get approved. I mean, yeah, a president could ask for the star and the moon and, you know, everything, and, you know, and if they get nothing, it's not helpful to the campus and it's not helpful to the students that we're trying to help.
In this case, Charlie, there really isn't sides, as there usual.
Sorry?
There isn't really a this side and that side.
No, no, and I'm not thinking that. I'm just thinking about how the process goes through to final. That's all, no.
Yep, all the way through. And it's been, I think Gail would support this. I think all of our presidents feel privileged to be working with Iris and her staff, not simply because of their competence, because of their values, but also because of their collaborative spirit.
Thank you. Sorry.
Any other questions?
One minute. For the next committee.
Okay. Motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Or a favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our business for this meeting is finished.